Good morning, everyone. Here we are for our third day of the recounts, our third and final day, I can assure you. So, the team is all somewhat rested, we're not fully rested because there's only so much rest you can get in that amount of time. But, but we're here and we're reinvigorated to continue this count with, with all of you watching and with all of you here with us. So, with that being said, we will go over to district number 16, which is the Dutchwater Community Help Desk. Sorry, that is the MAC. Number 17 is Dutchwater. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for, if you're a new viewer just joining us now, we start this process by looking at the invalid votes in the district first. However, for the rest of you, you know the drill, so we're gonna do the invalid votes and Mr. Baker will project them as I explain what is wrong with the ballot. So, for those of you who have seen us here deliberating, for district number 16, there were quite a lot of discrepancies in the PVS and their turfleister, so we're just having trouble reconciling numbers already. In this instance, we saw eight invalid votes mentioned on the PVS, however, we have counted 12, along with three ballots that were returned. Those are, these are correctly entered into the PVS. So, for this polling station, we will try to reconcile all the errors that we have found or the discrepancies. So, we will start at least by, with the invalid ballots, but essentially you need to look at it as we are completely recounting this district from scratch, since it's impossible to reconcile the numbers because there are too many discrepancies. So, here we have three ballots that were returned. So, these do not count towards the invalid ballots. And then, we will go over to the invalids and whether or not we believe that they are actually valid. We have here a vote that was held to be invalid, however, after a quick deliberation, we find this to be a valid vote. So, this will now count as a valid vote for candidate number three on list number eight, that is Bell. As you can see, while here, the, they slightly went out of the line, the line does not touch the area of any other candidate.
Good morning, everyone. Here we are for our third day of the recounts, our third and final day, I can assure you. So the team is all somewhat rested. We're not fully rested because there's only so much rest you can get in that amount of time. But we're here and we're reinvigorated to continue this count with all of you watching and with all of you here with us. So with that being said, we will go over to district number 16, which is the Dutchwater Community Help Desk. Sorry, that is the MAC. Number 17 is Dutchwater. Thank you, Mr. Baker. For if you're a new viewer just joining us now, we start this process by looking at the invalid votes in the district first. However, for the rest of you, you know the drill, so we're going to do the invalid votes. And Mr. Baker will project them as I explain what is wrong with the ballot. So for those of you who have seen us here deliberating, for district number 16, there were quite a lot of discrepancies in the PVS and their turfleister. So we're just having trouble reconciling numbers already. In this instance, we saw eight invalid votes mentioned on the PVS. However, we have counted 12 along with three ballots that were returned. Those are, these are correctly entered into the PVS. So for this polling station, we will try to reconcile all the errors that we have found or the discrepancies. So we will start at least by with the invalid ballots. But essentially, you need to look at it as we are completely recounting this district from scratch since it's impossible to reconcile the numbers because there are too many discrepancies. So here we have three ballots that were returned. So these do not count towards the invalid ballots. And then we will go over to the invalids and whether or not we believe that they are actually valid. We have here a vote that was held to be invalid. However, after a quick deliberation, we find this to be a valid vote. So this will now count as a valid vote for candidate number three on list number eight. That is Bell. As you can see, while here, they slightly went out of the line, the line does not touch the area of any other candidate. As you can see here, we have a blank ballot where there are no markings, no selections, just completely blank. Here we see different, they just crossed out through the different ballots. Here again, we have that, oh, two, the multiple markings were made. Here as well as selection for multiple candidates. Again. Here, I think there was a line put through of the candidate's name. Here, two, this checkmark went into the box of the candidate above, so into number four. Here we have a checkmark behind the name of the candidate. Our viewing public are now also becoming experts in invalidating votes. Here also, we went into the, well, if you see it up close, you can see that this enters into, it enters into the circle of the candidate below. Here again, an X behind the name of the candidate. Here we see that both the candidates, or the party leader's picture contains an X, making it invalid. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for your excellent skills once again. We have sorted the list. And as you can see, I'm one man down. But he'll be back just in a second. He went to get a stapler, which is also very necessary for us to execute this task. Wonderful. We're complete once again. So this is, again, district number 16, the MAC. And we will now commence the recount of candidate list number one. That is the NOW Party. Emmanuel. 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 That's it. 15. Von Camper. 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 Von, uh, no, sorry. 20. Karty. That's it. One. Mingret. Mingret. Two. Ballot. One. James. James. Two. Mantel. 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 That's it. Five. Hall. Hall. That's it. Two. Lopez. One. Louis. 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 That's it. 11. Schoep. 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 That's it. Four. Henrietta. One. Piper. One. Giovanni Goms. Giovanni Goms. Giovanni Goms. Giovanni Goms. Giovanni Goms. That's it. Five. Burnett. One. Tatiana Arendelle. One. Yes. That brings us to candidate list number two, the ECE. One. Oh, sorry. Wiggly. Let's do. Yeah. Wiggly. 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 15. Candidate list number three. Again, this is district 16, MAC. Bryson. 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 That's it. 18. Ottley. 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 That's it. Leonard. 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 That's it. 11. Mingo. 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 That's it. 14. Bijlani. 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 That's it. I have... Mingo. Leonard. All right. Sorry, everyone, the ballots are, there seem to be ballots from other candidates in between others. So we have to go back and add that vote to that particular person. Bijlani. 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 That's it. So we've noted, because the ballots were, two ballots, at least one for Leonard and one for Mingo were inside those for Bijlani. Accordingly, compared to the count that came in on election night, Bijlani has actually 54 votes instead of 56. And Tamara Leonard has 12 votes as opposed to 11. And Mark Mingo has 15 votes as opposed to 14. Arendelle. 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 That's it. 11. Brownbill. 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 That's it. Four. Hirdervain. Hirdervain. Two. Chatelet. One. Patrick. 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 R. Patrick. Yeah. Three. Blair. One. La Cruz. 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 11. Eleven. Alright. That brings us to candidate list number four, the PFP. Melissa Gums. 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 That's it. Forty-five. Peterson. 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 That's it. Eighteen. DeWever. 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 DeWe... DeWever. 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 That's it. Fifty-one. Patrice Gums. 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 That's it. Twenty-three. Nichols. 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 That's it. Five. Cooks. 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 That's it. Four. Blaze. 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 That's it. Six. Martina. 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 That's it. Three. Hodge. One. Solomon. 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 Seven. Thank you guys for your patience. We're now going to start the US party. There were, of course, very serious discussions going on here about what we could all eat because many of us have not yet had breakfast. So for those of you wondering, what we are fervently talking about here in the room, clearly just about food. Okay. This is candidate list number five, District sixteen MAC. Gordon Carty. Gordon Carty. Two. Nicholas. Nicholas. Two. Flanders. 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 Three. Charlie. One. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Five. Candidate list number six. Marcelina. 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 That's it. Thirty-four? Thirty-four. Waiver. 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 That's it. Five. Janson Webster. Janson Webster. Janson Webster. Three. Martina. One. Gracita Arendelle. Gracita Arendelle. Gracita Arendelle. Two. But then I have five. Yep. That's two for Gracita Arendelle. Three? Three. Three. Three for Gracita Arendelle. Yep. And now candidate number five. They were not ordered correctly. Now with candidate number five, they were mixed up. So... Roseburg. 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 That's it. Fourteen. Brug. 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 That's it. Eleven. Mauricia. 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 That's it. Six. Rolox. 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 That's it. Ten. Somersault. One. Today. Today. Two. Brooks. One. Stamenya. Stamenya. Two. Isenya. Isenya. Two. Matthew. 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 Seven. Also a clarification regarding the list number five... List number six, the U R S M. On election night, a number of two was called in for candidate number twelve, Brooks, and a total of one was called in for candidate number thirteen, Stamen. However, these should be the other way around. So Brooks has one vote and Stamen has two votes. All right, candidate list number seven. Again, this is district sixteen, the MAC. Jacobs, 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 Jacobs. Jacobs, 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 that's it. Twenty-seven. Doran, 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 Doran. Doran, 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 that's it. Thirty-one. Irian, 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 that's it. Twenty-five. Marlin, 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 that's it. Twenty-three. Samuel, 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 Samuel. Seven. Pompier, 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 Pompier. Seven. Anna Richardson, 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 Anna Richardson. Fourteen. Remu, Remu, two. Labega, 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 that's it. Seven. York, 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 York. York, 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 York. Thirteen. Beauportui, one. Williams Webster, Williams Webster, Williams Webster, Williams Webster, that's it. Four. Hutto, one. Molanes, 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 Molanes. Five. All right, that brings us to candidate list number eight. Candidate one, Wescott Williams, 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 that's it. Twenty-three. Candidate two, Heiliger, Heiliger Martin, 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 that's it. Thirty-four. Candidate three, Bell, 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 that's it. That is three that we counted in this pile. Plus, as everyone can remember from the beginning, we took one invalid vote and that became a valid vote for candidate number three, Bell, bringing his total in this district, number sixteen, to four. Candidate number four, Rayvan, 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 that's it. Five. Candidate number five, Kotai, 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 In front of me, I have what was previously held to be a valid vote for candidate number five, Kotai. However, after a brief deliberation, we find this vote to be invalid, given that there is an extra marking behind the candidate's name as well. Mr. Baker? Resuming the count, we're still on candidate number five. Kotai, 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 that's it. That is thirty-seven valid votes for candidate number five, Kotai. Candidate number six, Panafleck, Panafleck, that's it. Two. Candidate number seven, Ortega, one. Candidate number eight, Doralys, 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 that's it. Three. Candidate number nine, Alexander, one. Candidate number ten, Esset, 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 that's it. Nine. Candidate twelve, David Richardson, David Richardson, that's it. Two. Candidate thirteen, Rochester, Rochester, two. Candidate number fourteen, Chandler, one. Candidate number twenty, Arnell, one, uh, one, Arnell, 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 Arnell. Seven. Candidate twenty-two, Flanders, one. We, we're really happy because we don't have to recount voting cards and the, and the voters registry again, like we did last night. And so we were able to, with all the documents in front of us, we were able to reconcile all the numbers that we initially could not in this payway for this polling station. So everything now seems to, everything now checks out and all the math is correct. So Sandy will go over to reading the party results and individual results for district number sixteen, the MAC.
Good morning, everyone. I will indeed call out all the total amount of valid votes per candidate and per party. We're starting with list number one now. Candidate number one, Emmanuel, fifteen votes. Candidate number two, Bonkamper, twenty votes. Candidate number three, Carty, one vote. Candidate number four, Mingret, two votes. Candidate number five, Ballot, one vote. Candidate number six, James, two votes. Candidate number seven, Mantle, five votes. Candidate number eight, Hall, two votes. Candidate number nine, Lopez, one vote. Candidate number nine, Lopez, one vote. Candidate number ten, Lewis, eleven votes. Candidate number eleven, Scoop, four votes. Candidate number twelve, Langlet, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Henrietta, one vote. Candidate number fourteen, Smith, zero votes. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, one vote. Candidate number sixteen, Gumps, five votes. Candidate number seventeen, Reyes, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Burnett, one vote. Candidate number nineteen, Charles, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Arundel, one vote. Candidate number twenty-one, DeWeaver, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is seventy-three. Seven-three for list number one now. List number two, ECE. Candidate number one, Wiggly, fifteen votes. List number two, ECE. Yeah, one-five. List number three, UP. Candidate number one, Bryson, eighteen votes. Candidate number two, Oddly, forty-five votes. Candidate number three, Leonard, twelve votes. Candidate number four, Mingo, fifteen votes. Candidate number five, Bichlani, fifty-four votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, eleven votes. Candidate number seven, Brownbill, four votes. Candidate number eight, Hearnvein, two votes. Candidate number nine, Peterson, zero votes. Candidate number ten, Supriyana, zero votes. Candidate number eleven, Chatalier, one vote. Candidate number twelve, R. Patrick, three votes. Candidate number thirteen, Hiller, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Brown, zero votes. Candidate number fifteen, Mida, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Blair, one vote. Candidate number seventeen, Ramirez, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, F. Patrick, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Chase, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Winkler, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-three, La Cruz, eleven votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and seventy-seven. One-seven-seven. For list number three, UP. List number four, PFP. Candidate number one, Melissa Gumps, forty-five votes. Candidate number two, Peterson, eighteen votes. Candidate number three, DeWeaver, fifty-one votes. Candidate number four, Patrice Gumps, twenty-three votes. Candidate number five, Nichols, five votes. Candidate number six, Coaks, four votes. Candidate number seven, Blaze, six votes. Candidate number eight, Martina, three votes. Candidate number nine, Hodge, one vote. Candidate number ten, Solomon, seven votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and sixty-three. One-six-three. For list number four, PFP. List number five, US Party. Candidate number one, Gordon Carty, two votes. Candidate number two, Nicholas, two votes. Candidate number three, Boston, zero votes. Candidate number four, Flanders, three votes. Candidate number five, Jeffers, zero votes. Candidate number six, Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Charlie, one vote. Candidate number nine, Curtis Thomas, zero votes. Candidate number ten, Charles Thomas, zero votes. Candidate number eleven, Gromikio Wilson, five votes. Total amount of valid votes is thirteen. One-three. List number five, US Party. List number six, URSM. Candidate number one, Marcellina, thirty-four votes. Candidate number two, Wafer, five votes. Candidate number three, Janssen Webster, three votes. Candidate number four, Martina, one vote. Candidate number five, Roseberg, fourteen votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, three votes. Candidate number seven, Brug, eleven votes. Candidate number eight, Mauricia, six votes. Candidate number nine, Rolex, ten votes. Candidate number ten, Somersal, one vote. Candidate number eleven, Todé, two votes. Candidate number twelve, Felicia, Felicia Brooks, one vote. Candidate number thirteen, Steeman Yau, two votes. Candidate number fourteen, Isenia, two votes. Candidate number fifteen, Amor, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Hutchinson, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Matthew, seven votes. Candidate number eighteen, Peterson, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Charmaine, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and two. One-oh-two. List number six, URSM. List number seven, NA. Candidate number one, Jacobs, twenty-seven votes. Candidate number two, Doran, thirty-one votes. Candidate number three, Irian, twenty-five votes. Candidate number four, Marlin, twenty-three votes. Candidate number five, Samuel, seven votes. Candidate number six, Pompey, seven votes. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson, fourteen votes. Candidate number eight, Romo, two votes. Candidate number nine, La Vega, seven votes. Candidate number ten, York, thirteen votes. Candidate number eleven, Hyacinth Richardson, zero votes. Candidate number twelve, Connor, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Panafleck, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Boobertree, four votes, um, excuse me, one vote. Candidate number fifteen, Williams Webster, four votes. Candidate number sixteen, Concepcion, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Hurtol, one vote. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Merrick, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Molanes, five votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Ray, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-two, Devind, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-three, Faustin, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and sixty-seven. One-six-seven. For list number seven, National Alliance. The last one, list number eight, Democratic Party. Candidate number one, Wes Scott Williams, twenty-three votes. Candidate number two, Heiliger, thirty-four votes. Candidate number three, Bell, four votes. Candidate number four, Rayvan, five votes. Candidate number five, Kotai, thirty-seven votes. Candidate number six, Panafleck, two votes. Candidate number seven, Ortega, one vote. Candidate number eight, Dorales, three votes. Candidate number nine, Alexander, one vote. Candidate number ten, Esset, nine votes. Candidate number eleven, Kleinhaus, zero votes. Candidate number twelve, Richardson, two votes. Candidate number thirteen, Rochester, two votes. Candidate number fourteen, Chandler, one vote. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Adams, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Arndel, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Arnell, seven votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Agata, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-two, Flanders, one vote. Candidate number twenty-three, Akhen Richardson, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and thirty-two. One-three-two. For list number eight, Democratic Party. The total amount of casted valid votes for district number sixteen is eight-hundred-and-forty-two. Eight-four-two. The total amount of invalid votes for district number sixteen is twelve-one-two. That completes district number sixteen. Thank you. We will continue with district number seventeen now.
All right, and we're back with district number seventeen. And we're almost there. I hope everyone at home and everybody here can feel the finish line is in reach. So, uh, thank you again, everyone, you know, for, for being with us. We've also, you know, received, um, quite a lot of messages and seen some of the comments online, um, so we appreciate, um, all the kind words while we, uh, while we work through this. And, uh, it's all in, uh, the best interest in forwarding our democracy. So thank you again for tuning in with us and for listening to my voice on repeat as I call names off. And, uh, let's continue. District number seventeen, that is the Dutch Quarter Community Help Desk. As with the others, we will again start with the invalid votes. So here, Mr. Baker will show it, it is just one invalid vote at this polling station. Community Help Desk. So as you can see, there's a red X behind the number eight for the candidate list number eight. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Here we go. Candidate list number one. Again, this is, um, district number seventeen, the Dutch Quarter Community Help Desk. List number one, candidate number one, Emmanuel. 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 That is it. Nine. Candidate number two, Bonkamper, one. Candidate number three, Carty, one. Candidate number four, Mingret. 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 That is it. Five. Candidate number seven, Mantle. 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 That's it. Six. Candidate number eight, Hall, one. Candidate number ten, Lewis. 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 That's it. Three. Candidate number eleven, Scoop, one. Candidate number sixteen, Giovanni Gams, one. Candidate number seventeen, Reyes Pueyo, one. Candidate number twenty, Tatiana Arendelle. Arendelle, two. Candidate number twenty-one, DeWever. Correction. The vote we just mentioned for candidate number twenty-one, DeWever, after a brief deliberation with the members, the majority have decided that this is actually an invalid vote, given that also the number twenty-one was also colored in. Moving on to candidate list number two, the ECE. Wiggly. 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 Five. Candidate list number three. Candidate number one, Bryson. 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 That's it. Seven. Candidate number two, Ottley. 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 That's it. Twenty. Candidate number three. Candidate number three, Leonard. Leonard. That's it. Two. Candidate number four, Mingo. Mingo. Two. Candidate number six, Arendelle. 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 That's it. Four. Five. Correction, five. Candidate number seven, Brownbill, one. Candidate number ten, Supriana. 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 That's it. Three. Candidate number eleven, Chatelier. Chatelier. That's it. Two. Candidate number fourteen, Brown, one. Candidate number fifteen, Maida, one. Candidate number seventeen, Ramirez Abel, one. Candidate number twenty-three, La Cruz. 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 Nine. Candidate list number four. Candidate number one, Melissa Gomes. 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 That's it. Nine. Candidate number two, Peterson. 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 That's it. Candidate, oh, sorry, five. Candidate number three, DeWever. 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 That's it. Sixteen. Candidate number four, Patrice Gomes, one. Candidate number five, Nichols. Nichols, two. Candidate number six, Cooks, one. Candidate number eight, Martina, one. Candidate number ten, Solomon, one. Candidate list number five. Candidate number one, Gordon Kartie, one. Candidate number three, Boston. Boston, two. Candidate number eight, Charlie, one. Candidate number nine, Curtis Thomas, one. Candidate number ten, Charles Thomas, one. Candidate number eleven, Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. A clarification for party list number five. The US Party, on election night, a number of one was also called in for candidate number two, Nicholas, bringing the total party votes to eleven. However, we have only counted ten ballots, and there are no votes for Nicholas. Accordingly, the total for the US Party is ten. To further clarify regarding the candidate list number five, the US Party, given the discrepancy that we saw between the call-in numbers, we've also cross-referenced with the process for ballot that was submitted by the polling station that evening. And that number is correct with what we have just counted, so that being a total of ten and zero votes for candidate number two, Nicholas. So, the ballots have corresponded with the process for ballot. We will now move on to candidate list number six, that is the U R S M. Candidate number one, Marcelina. 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 That's it. Fifteen. Candidate number two, Waiver. 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 Two. Three, sorry, three. Candidate number three, Janssen Webster, one. Candidate number four, Martina, one. Candidate number five, Roseburg. Roseburg. Two. Candidate number six, Gracita Arendelle, one. Candidate number seven, Brug. 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 That's it. Four. Candidate number nine, Rolox. 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 That's it. Eight. Candidate number twelve, Brooks, one. Candidate number thirteen, Stamen Yau, one. Candidate number fourteen, Isenya, one. Candidate number seventeen, Matthew, one. That's it. Moving on to candidate list number seven, the National Alliance. Candidate number one, Jacobs. 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 That's it. Seven. Candidate number two, Doran. 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 That's it. Thirteen. Candidate number three, Irian. 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 That's it. Five. Candidate number four, Marlin. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number five, Samuel. 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 That's it. Five. Candidate number six, Pompye, one. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson. Anna Richardson. Anna Richardson. That's it. Three. Candidate number eight, Remu. 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 That's it. Four. Candidate number nine, La Vega, one. Candidate number ten, York. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number eleven, Hyacinth Richardson. Hyacinth Richardson. That's it. Two. Candidate number thirteen, Pantoflet. 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 That's it. Seven. Candidate number fifteen, Williams Webster. Williams Webster. Williams Webster. Three. Candidate number sixteen, Concinzion, one. Candidate number nineteen, Merrick. Merrick, two. Candidate number twenty-one, Ray, one. That's it. Candidate list number eight, the Democratic Party. Once again, this is district number seventeen, the Dutch Quarter Community Helped Us. Candidate number one, Wescott Williams. 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 That's it. Nineteen. Candidate number two, Heiliger Martin. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number three, Bell, one. Candidate number four, Rayvan. Rayvan. Two. Candidate number five, Kotai. 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 Three. Candidate number eight, Dora Lys. Dora Lys. Two. Candidate number nine, Alexander, one. Candidate number eleven, Kleinhaus, one. Candidate number fourteen, Chandler, one. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, one. Candidate number sixteen, Adamus, one. Candidate number seventeen, Williams. 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 That's it. Eight. Candidate number nineteen, Arndel, one. Candidate number twenty-two, Flanders. Flanders. Two. Candidate number twenty-three, Aken Richardson. Aken Richardson. Two.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call out the total amount of valid votes per candidate and per party for district number seventeen. Candidate, oh, sorry, list number one, now. Candidate number one, Emmanuel, nine votes. Candidate number two, Bonkampur, one vote. Candidate number three, Karty, one vote. Candidate number four, Maingret, five votes. Candidate number five, Ballot, zero votes. Candidate number six, James, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Mantel, six votes. Candidate number eight, Hall, one vote. Candidate number nine, Lopez, zero votes. Candidate number ten, Lewis, three votes. Candidate number eleven, Schoop, one vote. Candidate number twelve, Langley, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Henrietta, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Smith, zero votes. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Goms, one vote. Candidate number seventeen, Reyes Puelo, one vote. Candidate number eighteen, Burnett, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Charles, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Arndel, two votes. Candidate number twenty-one, De Weaver, ten votes. Total amount of valid votes is thirty-one. Three, one. For list number one, now. List number two, E C E. Candidate number one, Wigley, five votes. For list number two, E C E. Did I make a mistake just now? Oh, I'm so sorry. You're absolutely right. Thank you for that correction. Mr. Baker? Correct. I made a... Little scrabble here. Correction for list number one, now. Candidate number twenty-one, De Weaver, is zero votes. The total is still thirty-one. Three, one. Apologies for the wrong mentioning of the total amount of votes. We move on to list number two, E C E again, once more. Candidate number one, Wigley, five votes. All right. List number three, up. Candidate number one, Bryson, seven votes. Candidate number two, Adly, twenty votes. Candidate number three, Leonard, two votes. Candidate number four, Mingo, two votes. Candidate number five, Michalani, zero votes. Candidate number six, Arndel, five votes. Candidate number seven, Brownbill, one vote. Candidate number eight, Hervin, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Peterson, zero votes. Candidate number ten, Supriyana, three votes. Candidate number eleven, Chatelier, two votes. Candidate number twelve, R. Patrick, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Hiller, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Brown, one vote. Candidate number fifteen, Mida, one vote. Candidate number sixteen, Blair, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Ramirez, one vote. Candidate number eighteen, Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, F. Patrick, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Chase, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Benclerc, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-three, La Cruz, nine votes. Total amount of valid votes is fifty-four. Five, four. For list number three, up. List number four, P F P. Candidate number one, Melissa Goms, nine votes. Candidate number two, Peterson, five votes. Candidate number three, De Weaver, sixteen votes. Candidate number four, Patrice Goms, one vote. Candidate number five, Nichols, two votes. Candidate number six, Cox, one vote. Candidate number seven, Blaze, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Martina, one vote. Candidate number nine, Hodge, zero votes. Candidate number ten, Solomon, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is thirty-six. Three, six. For list number four, P F P. List number five, US Party. Candidate number one, Gordon Karty, one vote. Candidate number two, Nicholas, zero votes. Candidate number three, Boston, two votes. Candidate number four, Flanders, zero votes. Candidate number five, Jeffers, zero votes. Candidate number six, Martin Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Charlie, one vote. Candidate number nine, Curtis Thomas, one vote. Candidate number ten, Charles Thomas, one vote. Candidate number eleven, Romiko Wilson, four votes. Total amount of valid votes is ten votes. One, zero. List number five, US Party. List number six, U R S M. Candidate number one, Mercelina, fifteen votes. Candidate number two, Waiver, three votes. Candidate number three, Janssen Webster, one vote. Candidate number four, Martina, one vote. Candidate number five, Roseburg, two votes. Candidate number six, Arndel, one vote. Candidate number seven, Brug, four votes. Candidate number eight, Mauricia, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Rolox, eight votes. Candidate number ten, Sommersall, zero votes. Candidate number eleven, Today, zero votes. Candidate number twelve, Brooks, one vote. Candidate number thirteen, Steyman Yau, one vote. Candidate number fourteen, Isenya, one vote. Candidate number fifteen, Amor, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Hutchinson, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Matthew, one vote. Candidate number eighteen, Peterson, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Charleme, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is thirty-nine. Three, nine. For list number six, U R S M. List number seven, N A. Candidate number one, Jacobs, seven votes. Candidate number two, Doran, thirteen votes. Candidate number three, Irian, five votes. Candidate number four, Marlin, ten votes. Candidate number five, Samuel, five votes. Candidate number six, Pompier, one vote. Candidate number seven, Richardson, Anna, three votes. Candidate number eight, Remoo, four votes. Candidate number nine, La Vega, one vote. Candidate number ten, York, ten votes. Candidate number eleven, Hyacinth Richardson, two votes. Candidate number twelve, Connor, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Pantoflet, seven votes. Candidate number fourteen, Bouba Tri, zero votes. Candidate number fifteen, Williams, three votes. Candidate number sixteen, Concepcion, one vote. Candidate number seventeen, Hurtol, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Merrick, two votes. Candidate number twenty, Molanas, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Ray, one vote. Candidate number twenty-two, De Wind, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-three, Foster, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is seventy-five. Seven, five. For list number seven, National Alliance. The last one, list number eight, Democratic Party. Candidate number one, Wescott Williams, nineteen votes. Candidate number two, Heiliger, ten votes. Candidate number three, Bell, one vote. Candidate number four, Revan, two votes. Candidate number five, Kotai, three votes. Candidate number six, Pantefleck, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Ortega, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Dora Lys, two votes. Candidate number nine, Alexander, one vote. Candidate number ten, S Z, zero votes. Candidate number eleven, Kleinhaus, one vote. Candidate number twelve, Richardson, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Rochester, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Chandler, one vote. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, one vote. Candidate number sixteen, Adamus, one vote. Candidate number seventeen, Williams, eight votes. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Arndel, one vote. Candidate number twenty, Arnell, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Agata, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-two, Flanders, two votes. Candidate number twenty-three, Aken Richardson, two votes. Total amount of valid votes is fifty-five. Five, five. For list number eight, Democratic Party. The total amount of casted valid votes for district number seventeen is three hundred and five. Three, oh, five. The total amount of invalid votes for district number seventeen is two. That completes district number seventeen.
That brings us to district number eighteen. We're going to go right into it. We've already unlocked the bins, and Mr. Baker will take out the contents now. And for those wondering, district number seventeen, or district number eighteen is the Seventh Day Adventist School in Colby. We will again start with the invalid votes. I have here a blank vote. Another blank. Also blank. Multiple candidates. Multiple candidates. We have here a vote which was previously deemed to be invalid. It's for candidate number six. On list number six, Gracita Arendelle, we found that this is a valid vote. Mr. Baker will now project the various ballots. The first three are blank. We see a blank ballot. Another blank ballot behind that. We have three blank ballots. And then the final, the third blank ballot. Here we see that they have crossed the number of the candidate as opposed to circling, coloring in the circle above, in front of it. Here we see... Here we also see that something was written on the back of the ballot. And on the front, well, we see the same. I guess this person really wanted to tell us about the number four. Here we have a selection for multiple candidates. Oh, no, no, sorry. This one is slightly outside. So it goes into the circle of the candidate below, making it invalid. Here again, we see a line put behind the name of the candidate and the circle was not filled in. Then we see here an X put through the party leader's picture. Here markings. Here we see that the person did not color any circle. However, they did make their own circle. Here we see that they have colored a circle but also added in addition by underlining the name of the candidate. Here we see that they have colored the number of the candidate and not the circle itself. Then here we see that they have slightly gone out of the circle. Here again. Here we see a selection for multiple candidates. And here as well. All right. We have now moved on to candidate list number one. And once again, this is district number eighteen, the Seventh Day Adventist School in Colby. Candidate number one, Emmanuel. 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 That's it. Twenty-three. Candidate number two, Bun Camper. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number three, Carty, one. Candidate number four, Mingretz. 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 Thirty-nine. Candidate number five, Bellet. Bellet, two. Candidate number six, James. James. James, three. Candidate number seven, Mantle. Mantle. Mantle, three. Candidate number nine, Lopez. Lopez, two. Candidate number ten, Lewis, one. Candidate number eighteen, Burnett, one. Candidate number twenty-one, DeWeever, one. Candidate list number two, E C E. Wigley. 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 Eight. Candidate list number three. Candidate number one, Bryson. 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 That's it. Thirteen. Candidate number two, Ottley. 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 That's it. Forty-nine. Candidate number three, Leonard. Leonard. Leonard, three. Candidate number four, Mingo. 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 That's it. Seven. Candidate number five, Bijlani. Bijlani, two. Candidate number six, Arundel. 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 That's it. Nine. Candidate number seven, Brown Bill, one. Candidate number eight, Hirdervain, one. Candidate number nine, Peterson. Peterson, two. Candidate number ten, Supriyana. Supriyana, two. Candidate number eleven, Chatelier. 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 That's it. Four. Candidate number twelve, R. Patrick. R. Patrick. R. Patrick. That's it. Three. Candidate number thirteen, Hiller. Hiller. Hiller, three. Candidate number fifteen, Maida, one. Candidate number seventeen, Ramirez Abel, one. Candidate number twenty-one, Winkler, one. Candidate number twenty-three, La Cruz. 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 Eighteen. All right. Candidate list number four. All right. Candidate list number four, Melissa Gums. 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 That's it. Fourteen. Candidate number two, Peterson. 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 That's it. Eighteen. Candidate number three, DeWeever. 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 DeWever. 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 That's it. Sixteen. Candidate number four, Patrice Gums. 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 That's it. Nine. Nine. Candidate number five, Nichols. Nichols. Two. Candidate number six, Cooks. Cooks. Two. Candidate number seven, Blaze. One. Candidate number ten, Solomon. 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 Six. Candidate list number five, Gordon Carty. 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 That's it. Seven. Candidate list number three, Boston. Boston. Two. Candidate list number, oh, sorry. Candidate number four, Flanders. One. Candidate number six, Martin Wilson. One. Candidate number eight, Charlie. 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 That's it. Six. Candidate nine, Curtis Thomas. One. Candidate eleven, Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Romiko Wilson. Five. Candidate list, candidate list number six. Candidate number one, Marcellina. 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 That's it. Twenty-five. Candidate two, Waiver. 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 That's it. Four. Candidate number three, Jansen Webster. Jansen Webster. Jansen Webster. Three. Candidate number four, Martina. One. Candidate number five, Roseburg. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number six, Gracita Arundel. Gracita Arundel. Two. Plus, uh, plus one vote that we had previously found to be that valid as opposed to invalid making her total three. Candidate number seven, Bruch. 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 That's it. Three. Candidate number eight, Mauricia. 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 Three. Candidate number nine, Rolox. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number eleven, Today. One. Candidate number twelve, Brooks. One. Candidate number thirteen, Stayman Yao. One. Candidate number fourteen, Isenya. One. Candidate number seventeen, Matthew. Matthew. Two. Candidate number eighteen, Peterson. One. That's it. Candidate list number seven, the National Alliance. Again, this is district number eighteen, the Seven Day Adventist School in Colby. Candidate number one, Jacobs. 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 That's it. Twenty-two. Candidate number two, Doran. 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 That's it. Seven. Candidate number three, Irian. 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 That's it. Twelve. Candidate number four, Marlin. 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 That's it. Twenty-two. Candidate number five, Samuel. Samuel. Two. Candidate number six, Pompye. 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 That's it. Five. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson. Anna Richardson. Anna Richardson. That's it. Three. Candidate number eight, Ramu. Ramu. Two. Candidate number nine, Labega. 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 Four. Candidate number ten, York. 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 That's it. Ten. Candidate number eleven, Hyacinth Richardson. Hyacinth Richardson. Hyacinth Richardson. Hyacinth Richardson. Hyacinth Richardson. Five. Candidate number fourteen, Boportui. 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 That's it. Four. Candidate number sixteen, Concepcion. One. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez. One. Candidate number twenty, Molanas. One. Candidate number twenty-three, Faustine. 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 Four. Candidate list number eight, the Democratic Party. Again, district eighteen, Seven Day Adventist School in Colby. Candidate number one, Wescott Williams. 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 That's it. We have a discrepancy of, we all counted twenty-four. However, on the evening of the elections, twenty-five were called in, so we will recount the ballots one more time. One. Two. Three. Four. Five. Six. Seven. Eight. Nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. Fifteen. Sixteen. Seventeen. Eighteen. Nineteen. Twenty. Twenty-one. Twenty-two. Twenty-three. Twenty-four. Candidate number two, Heiliger Martin. 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 That's it. Eight. So we see there the discrepancy of one vote. On election night, a total of seven votes was called in for Heiliger Martin and twenty-five for Wescott Williams. After the recount, it is twenty-four for Wescott Williams and eight for Heiliger Martin as opposed to seven. Candidate number three, Bell. Bell. Two. Candidate number four, Rayvan. Rayvan. Two. Candidate number five, Kotai. 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 That's it. Nineteen. Candidate number six. Panafleck. Panafleck. Two. Candidate number eight, Dora Lise. One. Candidate number nine, Alexander. 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 Three. Candidate number ten, Esset. 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 Three. Candidate number twelve, David Richardson. David Richardson. Two. Candidate number fourteen, Chandler. Chandler. Two. Candidate number sixteen, Adamas. One. Candidate number twenty-one, Agata. 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 That's it. Four. Candidate number twenty-three, Akin Richardson. One. Good afternoon, everyone, once again. I will call out the total amount of valid votes for each candidate and for each party for district number eighteen. So once again, district number eighteen, list number one, now. Candidate number one, Emmanuel. Twenty-three votes. Candidate number two, Bonkamper. Ten votes. Candidate number three, Carty. One vote. Candidate number four, Mangret. Thirty-nine votes. Candidate number five, Bellot. Two votes. Candidate number six, James. Three votes. Candidate number seven, Mantle. Three votes. Candidate number eight, Hall. Zero votes. Candidate number nine, Lopez. Two votes. Candidate number ten, Lewis. One vote. Candidate number eleven, Scoop. Zero votes. Candidate number twelve, Langley. Zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Henrietta. Zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Henrietta, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Smith, zero votes. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Gomes, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Reyes Puelo, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Burnett, one vote. Candidate number nineteen, Charles Hassel, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Arundel, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, DeWeever, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is eighty-six. Eight-six for list number one, now. List number two, ECE. Candidate number one, Wigley, eight votes. List number two, ECE. List number three, UP. Candidate number one, Bryson, thirteen votes. Candidate number two, Oddly, forty-nine votes. Candidate number three, Leonard, three votes. Candidate number four, Mingo, seven votes. Candidate number five, Bichlani, two votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, nine votes. Candidate number seven, Bromdel, one vote. Candidate number eight, Herenvain, one vote. Candidate number nine, Peterson, two votes. Candidate number ten, Supriyana, two votes. Candidate number eleven, Chatalier, four votes. Candidate number twelve, R. Patrick, three votes. Candidate number thirteen, Hiller, three votes. Candidate number fourteen, Brown, zero votes. Candidate number fifteen, Meda, one vote. Candidate number sixteen, Blair, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Ramirez, one vote. Candidate number eighteen, Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, F. Patrick, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Chase, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Winkler, one vote. Candidate number twenty-three, La Cruz, eighteen votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and twenty. One, two, zero. List number three, UP. List number four, PFP. Candidate number one, Melissa Gomes, fourteen votes. Candidate number two, Peterson, eighteen votes. Candidate number three, DeWeever, sixteen votes. Candidate number four, Patrice Gomes, nine votes. Candidate number five, Nichols, two votes. Candidate number six, Cox, two votes. Candidate number seven, Blaze, one vote. Candidate number eight, Martina, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Hodge, zero votes. Candidate number ten, Solomon, six votes. Total amount of valid votes is sixty-eight. Six-eight for list number four, PFP. List number five, US Party. Candidate number one, Gordon Carty, seven votes. Candidate number two, Nicholas, zero votes. Candidate number three, Boston, two votes. Candidate number four, Flanders, one vote. Candidate number five, Jeffers, zero votes. Candidate number six, Martin Wilson, one vote. Candidate number seven, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Charlie, six votes. Candidate number nine, Curtis Thomas, one vote. Candidate number ten, Charles Thomas, zero votes. Candidate number eleven, Gromikio Wilson, five votes. Total amount of valid votes is twenty-three. Two, three. List number five, US Party. List number six, URSM. Candidate number one, Marcelina, twenty-five votes. Candidate number two, Wafer, four votes. Candidate number three, Janssen Webster, three votes. Candidate number four, Martina, one vote. Candidate number five, Roseburg, ten votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, three votes. Candidate number seven, Brug, three votes. Candidate number eight, Mauricia, three votes. Candidate number nine, Rolax, ten votes. Candidate number ten, Sommersal, zero votes. Candidate number eleven, Today, one vote. Candidate number twelve, Brooks, one vote. Candidate number thirteen, Steeman Yau, one vote. Candidate number fourteen, Icenya, one vote. Candidate number fifteen, Amor, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Hodgson, zero votes. Candidate number seventeen, Matthew, two votes. Candidate number eighteen, Peterson, one vote. Candidate number nineteen, Charmaine, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is sixty-nine. Six, nine. List number six, URSM. List number seven, NA. Candidate number one, Jacobs, twenty-two votes. Candidate number two, Doran, seven votes. Candidate number three, Irian, twelve votes. Candidate number four, Marlin, twenty-two votes. Candidate number five, Samuel, two votes. Candidate number six, Pompey, five votes. Candidate number seven, Richardson, Anna, three votes. Candidate number eight, Rumou, two votes. Candidate number nine, La Vega, four votes. Candidate number ten, York, ten votes. Candidate number eleven, Hyacinth Richardson, five votes. Candidate number twelve, Connor, zero votes. Candidate number thirteen, Ponteflet, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Bouba Tri, four votes. Candidate number fifteen, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Constitution, one vote. Candidate number seventeen, Hurtol, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez, one vote. Candidate number nineteen, Merrick, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Mullanes, one vote. Candidate number twenty-one, Ray, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-two, Devind, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-three, Faustin, four votes. Total amount of valid votes is a hundred and five. One, oh, five. List number seven, National Alliance. The last one, list number eight, Democratic Party. Candidate number one, Wescott Williams, twenty-four votes. Candidate number two, Heiliger, eight votes. Candidate number three, Bell, two votes. Candidate number four, Rayvan, two votes. Candidate number five, Kotai, nineteen votes. Candidate number six, Panafleck, two votes. Candidate number seven, Ortega, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Dora Lys, one vote. Candidate number nine, Alexander, three votes. Candidate number ten, Esset, three votes. Candidate number eleven, Kleinhaus, zero votes. Candidate number twelve, Richardson, two votes. Candidate number thirteen, Rochester, zero votes. Candidate number fourteen, Chandler, two votes. Candidate number fifteen, Piper, zero votes. Candidate number sixteen, Adames, one vote. Candidate number seventeen, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number eighteen, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number nineteen, Arundel, zero votes. Candidate number twenty, Arnold, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-one, Agata, four votes. Candidate number twenty-two, Flanders, zero votes. Candidate number twenty-three, Akin Richardson, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is seventy-four. Seven, four, for list number eight, Democratic Party. The total amount of casted valid votes for District number eighteen is five-hundred-and-fifty-three. Five, five, three. The total amount of invalid votes for District number eighteen is sixteen. One, six. That completes District number eighteen. Thank you, Sandy, once again. Now we'll go in straight into District number nineteen, that is the Pointe Blanche Prison. Some comedy here, which we'll get to in the next candidate list, when some, when a gentleman has been sitting with us for the past three days can finally have some reassurance in his life that his vote is in here. So, candidate, no, this is candidate list number one, once again, this is the Pointe Blanche Prison, House from Bavarding. So we have candidate number two, Bonkamper. 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 And then candidate number, oh, sorry, how much was that?
Five.
Five. Candidate number four, Mengret, one. Candidate number ten, Lewis, one. Also, for clarification, there were no invalid votes reported in the prison, hence why we didn't go through any envelope of invalid votes. We've now gotten to candidate list number two, the ECE, which indeed, I have one valid vote here for the ECE. And we've had Mr. Wigley and a friend of his sitting with us for the past couple of days, waiting patiently until we got to District number nineteen, because zero votes were reported for list number two, the ECE. However, the gentleman here says, but I vote in a prison, I know I vote! So it's this gentleman's here vote. We can assure you that your vote was validly cast and that it will be added and counted to the total of Mr. Wigley for the ECE. So we've also just verified, we grabbed the pay-va for the prison. It was, however, recorded correctly in the pay-va on the evening, however, I guess when they called in the results, somehow a zero went through for you. So we can verify at least and reconcile that the numbers are correct. I'm just very excited to see that at least it was worth the wait for these two gentlemen here, because they have been sticking it out with us, like, they were the first in, last out. Moving on to list number three, but at least I'm happy that we found that vote, because it made this recount all, you see that that, you know, shows the transparency and efficacy of this process and that, and again, you know, kind of at least has restored the faith of these two people, the trust in our electoral system and that we do our jobs properly. So I'm really happy to see that we found that vote. Candidate list number three. Candidate number two, Oddly. 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 Twelve. Candidate number four, Mingo, one. Candidate number eight, Herenvain, one. Candidate number ten, Supriyana, one. Candidate number seventeen, Ramirez, one. Then I have candidate list number five, one vote was cast. No, there were no, there were no votes cast for candidate list number four, that is the PFP. Zero votes in the prison. Then that brings us to candidate list number five. I have one vote cast for candidate number eleven, Gromiko Wilson. Moving on to candidate list number six, I have one vote for candidate number four, Martina. And I have two votes for candidate number five, Roseburg. Moving on to candidate list number seven, I have candidate number two, Doran. 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 Twelve. Candidate number four, Marlin, one. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson, one. That brings us to candidate list number eight. I have one vote that was cast for candidate number twenty-two, that is Patsy Flanders.
Good afternoon once again. I will now call out all the valid votes per candidate and per party for district number 19. Candidate number one, Emmanuel, zero votes. Candidate number two, Bonkamper, five votes. Candidate number three, Carty, zero votes. Candidate number four, Maingret, one vote. Candidate number five, Belot, zero votes. Candidate number six, James, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Mantle, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Hall, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Lopez, zero votes. Candidate number 10, Louis, one vote. Candidate number 11, Schop, zero votes. Candidate number 12, Longla, zero votes. Candidate number 13, Henrietta, zero votes. Candidate number 14, Smith, zero votes. Candidate number 15, Piper, zero votes. Candidate number 16, Gomes, zero votes. Candidate number 17, Reyes Puelo, zero votes. Candidate number 18, Burnett, zero votes. Candidate number 19, Charles Hassel, zero votes. Candidate number 20, Arundel, zero votes. Candidate number 21, Weaver, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is seven for list number one now. List number two, ECE, candidate number one, one vote. Very important, list number two, ECE. List number three, UP. Candidate number one, Bryson, zero votes. Candidate number two, Ottley, 12 votes. Candidate number three, Leonard, zero votes. Candidate number four, Mingo, one vote. Candidate number five, Bichalani, zero votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Brownbill, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Heerveen, one vote. Candidate number nine, Peterson, zero votes. Candidate number 10, Supriyana, one vote. Candidate number 11, Chateley, zero votes. Candidate number 12, R. Patrick, zero votes. Candidate number 13, Hiller, zero votes. Candidate number 14, Brown, zero votes. Candidate number 15, Mida, zero votes. Candidate number 16, Blair, zero votes. Candidate number 17, Ramirez Abel, one vote. Candidate number 18, Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number 19, F. Patrick, zero votes. Candidate number 20, Chase, zero votes. Candidate number 21, Winkler, zero votes. Candidate number 23, La Cruz, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is 16, one, six, for list number three, UP. For list number four, PFP, there were no votes casted, thus the amount is zero for every candidate on this party. Ten candidates, zero votes. List number four, PFP. List number five, US Party. Candidate number one, Gordon Carty, zero votes. Candidate number two, Nicholas, zero votes. Candidate number three, Boston, zero votes. Candidate number four, Flanders, zero votes. Candidate number five, Jeffers, zero votes. Candidate number six, Martin Wilson, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Charlie, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Curtis Thomas, zero votes. Candidate number 10, Charles Thomas, zero votes. Candidate number 11, Gromiko Wilson, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is one for list number five, US Party. List number six, URSM. Candidate number one, Marcelina, zero votes. Candidate number two, Waiver, zero votes. Candidate number three, Janssen Webster, zero votes. Candidate number four, Martina, one vote. Candidate number five, Roseburg, two votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Beruch, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Mauricia, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Rolex, zero votes. Candidate number 10, Somersal, zero votes. Candidate number 11, Todé, zero votes. Candidate number 12, Brooks, zero votes. Candidate number 13, Steeman Yau, zero votes. Candidate number 14, Isenia, zero votes. Candidate number 15, Amor, zero votes. Candidate number 16, Hodgson, zero votes. Candidate number 17, Matthew, zero votes. Candidate number 18, Peterson, zero votes. Candidate number 19, Charlemagne, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is three for list number six, URSM. List number seven, NA. Candidate number one, Jacobs, zero votes. Candidate number two, Doran, 12 votes. Candidate number three, Irian, zero votes. Candidate number four, Marlin, one vote. Candidate number five, Samuel, zero votes. Candidate number six, Pompier, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson, one vote. Candidate number eight, Rumou, zero votes. Candidate number nine, La Vega, zero votes. Candidate number 10, York, zero votes. Candidate number 11, Hayes and Richardson, zero votes. Candidate number 12, Connor, zero votes. Candidate number 13, Pontefle, zero votes. Candidate number 14, Boupertri, zero votes. Candidate number 15, Williams Webster, zero votes. Candidate number 16, Concepcion, zero votes. Candidate number 17, Hurtold, zero votes. Candidate number 18, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number 19, Merrick, zero votes. Candidate number 20, Molanas, zero votes. Candidate number 21, Ray, zero votes. Candidate number 22, DeWint, zero votes. Candidate number 23, Postin, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is 14, one, four, for list number seven, National Alliance. The last one, list number eight, Democratic Party. Candidate number one, Wes Scott Williams, zero votes. Candidate number two, Heiliger, zero votes. Candidate number three, Bell, zero votes. Candidate number four, Revan, zero votes. Candidate number five, Kotai, zero votes. Candidate number six, Panafleck, zero votes. Candidate number seven, Ortega, zero votes. Candidate number eight, Dorelis, zero votes. Candidate number nine, Alexander, zero votes. Candidate number 10, Esset, zero votes. Candidate number 11, Kleinhut, zero votes. Candidate number 12, Richardson, zero votes. Candidate number 13, Rochester, zero votes. Candidate number 14, Chandler, zero votes. Candidate number 15, Piper, zero votes. Candidate number 16, Adamus, zero votes. Candidate number 17, Williams, zero votes. Candidate number 18, Hernandez, zero votes. Candidate number 19, Arndel, zero votes. Candidate number 20, Arnell, zero votes. Candidate number 21, Agata, zero votes. Candidate number 22, Flanders, one vote. Candidate number 23, Aken Richardson, zero votes. Total amount of valid votes is one for list number eight, Democratic Party. The total amount of casted valid votes at district number 19 is 43, four, three. The total amount of invalid votes is zero. That completes district number 19. Thank you.
That brings us to our final polling station for the recount. That is district number 20, and that is the St. Martin home. I'm sure all of you are just as excited as we are for this last one. And after that, for those still tuning in, and I'll repeat it again once we, once we finish this count, it is our intention to announce the official election results this afternoon. We are hoping for 3 o'clock, but it might be closer to three more around 3:30 realistically speaking. So we will open a separate meeting in which we will announce the results, the official results of the election, those being, you know, the official seat allocation as well as which individuals will be, have won a seat, let's put it that way. We are now, as I mentioned, district number 20, the last one, yes, inward chanting for me and excitement. We saw that on the reported numbers for election night, there was a mention of one invalid vote. However, we, there's no invalid vote in the box and looking at the pay valet, the pay valet says zero invalid votes, but it does say that there was one void ballot, which we have found, so it was likely a miscommunication in how it was reported on the evening. So there are no invalid ballots at district number 20 from, at the beginning at least. We'll see if we find any. Alright. Starting with candidate list number one, the now. Candidate number one, Emmanuel, one. Candidate number four, Maingret, one. There were no votes cast for candidate list number two, the ECE. So we'll move on to candidate list number three. Candidate number two, Ottley, one. Candidate number six, Arundel, one. Yep. We've also noted that for candidate list number three, on election night, it was reported that candidate number three, Leonard, had received a vote. However, it is candidate number two, Ottley. It seems that they read off the wrong line, so our verification has shown that it is one vote for Ottley, zero for Leonard, and then another, one other vote for candidate number six, Arundel. Then we have the PFP. I have one valid vote cast for Melissa Gomes. That brings us to candidate list number five. I have one vote for candidate number eight, Charlie, and I have one vote for candidate number 11, Gromiko Wilson. Then I have candidate list number six, URSM. I have one vote for candidate number one, Marcelina. I have one vote for candidate, or I'm sorry, I have two votes for candidate number five, Roseburg, and I have one vote for candidate number six, Gracita Arundel. Roseburg, one for Gracita. That brings us to candidate list number seven. Candidate number one, Jacobs. 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 That's it. Five. Candidate number two, Doran. Doran, two. Candidate number three, Irian, one. Candidate number four, Marlin. Marlin, two. Candidate number five, Samuel, one. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson, one. Candidate number eight, Rumou, one. Candidate number 10, York, one, two. Candidate number ten, York, one, two. Candidate list number eight, the Democratic Party. Candidate number one, Westcott Williams, Westcott Williams, I have an invalid vote. On, this vote was previously a valid vote for candidate number one, Westcott Williams. However, there are multiple markings on the paper. The circle was colored in, but also a line was put next to the number eight of the list. So, I know that, you know. Then, we have, again, continue, Westcott Williams, 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 that's it. Eleven. Candidate number two, Heiliger Martin, Heiliger Martin, two. Candidate number twelve, David Richardson, one.
Okay, good afternoon once more. We have reached the last district, district number twenty. I will announce the total amount of valid votes per candidate and per party. We have decided to not mention all the candidates that have zero votes, so that it will go a little faster. List number one, now. Candidate number one, Emmanuel, one vote. Candidate number four, Mengret, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is two. For list number one, now. List number two, ECE, zero votes. List number three, up. Candidate number two, Oddly, one vote. Candidate number six, Arundel, one vote. Total amount of valid votes for list number three is two. That is for up. List number four, PFP. Candidate number one, Melissa Gomes, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is one for list number four, PFP. List number five, US Party. Candidate number eight, Charlie, one vote. Candidate number eleven, Gromiko Wilson, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is two for list number five, US Party. List number six, URSM. Candidate number one, Marcelina, one vote. Candidate number five, Roseberg, two votes. Candidate number six, Arundel, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is four for list number six, URSM. List number seven, NA. Candidate number one, Jacobs, five votes. Candidate number two, Doran, two votes. Candidate number three, Irian, one vote. Candidate number four, Marlin, two votes. Candidate number five, Samuel, one vote. Candidate number seven, Anna Richardson, one vote. Candidate number eight, Rumou, one vote. Candidate number ten, York, two votes. Total amount of valid votes is fifteen, one, five for list number seven, National Alliance. Now, the very last one, list number eight, Democratic Party. Candidate number one, Westcott Williams, eleven votes. Candidate number two, Heiliger Martin, two votes. Candidate number twelve, Richardson, one vote. Total amount of valid votes is fourteen, one, four for list number eight, Democratic Party. The total amount of casted valid votes for district number twenty is forty, four, zero. The total amount of invalid votes for district number twenty is one. That completes district number twenty.
Thank you again, Sandy. That brings us to the end of our recount. It's been a long two and a half days, but we persevered and we're here. And what we will do now is we will deliberate on, with the official, with the results of the recount. And based on there, we will make official calculations and official results of this parliamentary election. We were aiming for three o'clock, however, looking at the time now, I think it's more realistic to say that we will be back here at three-thirty. And then, that will be a separate and new public meeting in which we will announce the election results to everyone, since I know everybody is very curious. You've all lived here with us for the last two and a half days. And we want to get that information out to you as soon as possible. And the law also requires for us to make those results known as soon as we can. So, we will deliberate and we'll be back with you in the next hour and a half to, you know, finally let you know what it's going to be. So, thank you all again for your patience. Thank you for sticking with us. Thank you for my fellow members for sticking it out with me as well, and for the hard work, and also the public that have been with us throughout this whole process as well, as well as the staff of Parliament and DECOM. Thank you very much. And we'll see you guys a little bit later in a new meeting. Thanks.